North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council Meeting is called to order at, looks like 7:07 PM. We will start with this, with the salute to the flag. Roll call.
Mayor Vicky Young.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zanpano.
Here.
Councillor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Duddy.
Yeah.
Councillor Fawnin.
Here.
Councillor Gold.
Here.
Councillor Paternoster.
Here.
Councillor Felicia.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Well, what meeting? We have two minutes to...
Oh, the October 15th meeting. WPCA and Town Council minutes.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second, with the following correction on page seven, which is page 10 in our iPad. The last paragraph, the last sentence, it just says, "This ordinance provides for," and then there's nothing else. So it's not a complete sentence, and I'm not exactly sure what that's supposed to be. It's talking about the blight ordinance, but I just don't know what that rank is supposed to be. So I think we're gonna have to table this until next meeting, until Michelle can check.
So I withdraw my motion.
And I withdraw my second. And I make a motion to table until we fix page seven, that last sentence on page seven.
I don't think we got a sec-- do we get a second?
Second. I'll second that.
Rose-- Rosa Marie. Okay.
We're not gonna table it anymore.
It's an empty roll call for this motion.
I need to have a motion to approve the minutes of...
No, no, we need a roll call for this.
Oh, roll call first. Sorry, Michelle.
That's okay.
Mayor Vicky Young.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanpano.
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Duddy.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councillor Gold.
Yes.
Councillor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councillor Felicia.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 12th WPCA and Town Council ceremonial meeting.
So moved.
Rosa and Marie, roll call. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Vicky Young.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanpano.
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Duddy.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councillor Gold.
Yes.
Councillor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councillor Felicia.
Okay, we're gonna move into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Correspondence and citizen statements. None. Unfinished business, there's none. New business, discussion and action.
Good evening. I'll try to be brief, and I'll just go over my memorandum, which is included in your package. The first item before you is a request to connect to sanitary sewers property, Bill Miller's Castle, located at Eight Notch Hill Road in North Branford. The plans include the proposed layout, which would include an extension of the existing sanitary sewer system within Branford. Basically, along Route One from the entrance to Evergreen Woods, easterly to Bill Miller's Castle. The important thing to know about this proposal is, the sanitary sewers don't exist to this property yet. They will, this application will need to be referred to Branford for review and action. And Branford will need to actually approve the sanitary sewer extension within the town of Branford, to which Bill Miller proposes to connect to. Bill Miller's proposing to be responsible for the complete installation, again, in both towns, and file a connection. Because the property is within the town of North Branford, or the North Branford WPCA will have to approve the final connection to the line. But the important thing is, Branford first has to approve the extension of the line up to Bill Miller's Castle. So ultimately, at the end of all this, the request is that the North Branford WPCA refer it to the Branford WPCA for action and a report. But just to highlight a couple other items. The property will have to pay a special connection fee to the town of North Branford for the ability to connect to sanitary sewers. That's based upon the square footage and the use of the property. Basically, the property is about 15,000 square feet. And because it's a commercial use, they're assessed at the rate of $4,000 per unit, which a unit is 1,000 square feet of floor area, for the first five units, and $2,000 per unit for the remaining units. The connection fee will be a $40,000 connection fee. Again, that actually won't take place until it comes back to the North Branford WPCA after Branford has acted upon it. There's a diagram in there, which is readily available, you can look at in terms of the application. There's a color, I tried to simplify it, but that's essentially it. It's ending along Route One in Branford to North Branford, to which Bill Miller's will connect to it. There is a suggestive motion, has to be referred to the town of Branford for action and a report. You're gonna answer any questions?
So am I understanding, a unit is the number of square feet, is that what you call a unit?
A unit, in this case, it's every thousand square feet of commercial space is one unit. So they basically have 15 units because they're...
Yes, I wasn't sure when I was reading this what that meant.
They're supposed to be putting in a traffic circle up there, this won't get in the way of that?
This won't get in the way of that, no. I think they want to get in before all the activity takes, takes place. They've talked about it for a number of years, and they've finally gotten around to it. I have had discussions with the town of Branford, their towns in the area, and we're sort of in sync in terms of the referral and the like.
So what you're saying, Curtis, all we're doing is approving the referral to Branford, we're not approving the connection?
We're not approving the connection. Once Branford approves the line to which they would connect to, in the town of Branford, then we can take formal action on approving the connection into that line. It's similar, and then again, for use, they're paying a connection fee, which is estimated, which would be $42,000 based upon the square footage. Then they would pay their annual sewer usage fee, which is based upon their metered water consumption. Same thing we do, and just like Evergreen Woods, we report that, because that's non-metered sewer flow. We add that to our metered sewer flow that goes to Branford, and Branford bills us for that usage on their end. But again, the motion is to refer it to the town of Branford Water Pollution Control Authority.
There is no motion.
Yeah, I may be trouble finding your motion.
There's no motion in here. So I'll just make a motion to refer the connection of sanitary sewers at Eight Notch Hill Road to Branford WPCA.
It was on the second page.
It's not in our, it's not in our packet.
Did we leave anything out of the motion?
They have the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority refers it...
Well, there's no, there's no second page. We go from Kurt's memo, the first page, to Criscola Engineering. So there's... Yeah, okay. All right, so the suggestive motion is that the North Branford, I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford WPCA refers the request to connect number Eight Notch Hill Road, Bill Miller's Castle, into sanitary sewers to be constructed within Route One in Branford to the Branford WPCA for review and possible action, and request a report back to the North Branford WPCA regarding the Branford WPCA findings and possible actions.
Second. Roll, roll call.
Mayor Vicky Young.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanpano.
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Duddy.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councillor Gold.
Yes.
Councillor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councillor Felicia.
Kurt, you wanna do the second one now?
Okay, the next item regards property located at 224 Foxen Road. Basically, the trailer park at the corner of Route 80 and Totucket Road. A couple of years ago, the property owner, who owned, owns an adjacent property, requested approval to extend sanitary sewers to that property, put a sanitary sewer force main in, and to serve a commercial industrial building located on Totucket Road. And they were granted approval for it, they've constructed the building, and they've constructed the sanitary sewers, and they, everything's operational at this point. When they did that installation, they actually received approval to put two parallel force mains in, thinking that the potential was there that they could, in the future, connect the trailer park, which contains mobile home units and recreational vehicle units. The details hadn't been worked out, but that was the thought at that time, that they could potentially do that down the road, make a connection. At this point, they're considering, or they'd like to hook, or connect three recreational vehicle units to the sanitary sewer line. At this point, and then down the road, they'd like to connect the mobile home park and the rest of the units to sanitary sewers. The underlying, the major issue is, what connection fee do they pay? Currently, our regulations basically say, a single-family residential dwelling unit pays $12,300 per unit. Unless they're age-restricted, if they're age-restricted, it's basically $4,000 a unit for the first five units, $2,000 per unit thereafter. The property owner's indicated that he would intend to have the mobile home units become age-restricted units. That's how he would operate the facility, and it would appear that they would be, in the future, they would come under that type of definition. The question, the bigger question right now is recreational units. How would you, how would we come up with a charge for what special connection fee they would pay? Because they're in and they're out, they're basically paying for a site on the annual basis, and for those units that are in and out. I would think from a use point of view, we'd call them a unit, and we bill them based upon, you know, a unit is a unit, it's a residential unit. Again, that's my initial thinking. But the special connection fee, the owner of the property has requested some type of consideration to reduce that, that payment fee more in line with an age-restricted type fee, which is a lesser fee than a strict housing unit. I'm throwing it out there, I don't have any recommendations one way or the other. My thought was to make you aware of it, and I could look into it a little bit further, maybe come back with some possible consideration. I tried to look if there were similar campgrounds that connect the sewers, and did a little internet research, and I couldn't find anything. I could try to generate something for discussion and consideration. And that's really what we're here for, to discuss at this point.
You're really kind of asking us to interpret a regulation, which is kind of beyond the ken of this council. It's probably something that you and the town attorney should be discussing. And more to the point, I'm a little bit troubled with the proposal that we consider a charge based on the fact that these mobile homes will at some point be designated as senior housing. I think they've gotta be either designated at the time we grant a concession or not. But where they fit within the regulation, I think, is more appropriate for the town attorney, and perhaps maybe even a dialogue with the developer's attorney, to come back to us with a recommendation, rather than us trying to interpret our regulation and somehow shooting ourselves in the foot, or buying a lawsuit from this developer.
Okay. Just a clarification, I think the mobile home units, those, well, those will be, oh, they are age-restricted. Okay. I mean, and that would be the intent, that if they're gonna meet that definition, they would have to be that.
But what he's requesting to, right now...
Right now, he's only connecting three recreational...
Recreational sites, which is different from the mobile home sites, which are age-restricted.
That's correct. But I would think it would be a good time to look at the whole issue, if that's a long-term intent. More than happy to deal with the town attorney's office on that, and try to see what's out there, and come back with, and with the property owner, and come back with a possibilities for consideration that seem to make sense. I just wanted to make you aware of the issue before I got too involved, you know, in the whole search, that it's out there. I'm trying to come up with something that hopefully fits.
Why is there only three being done now, and not, why are we not talking about the whole park?
Don Capelli, he's the property owner.
I'm the property owner, Don Capelli. So, we currently have 47 HUD-regulated, 55 and older mobile home units. The line was put down to Totucket Road with the intention of connecting those units at some point. Our septic systems were put in 1955, so we know this is coming. In the RV park, we are adding three additional units, that have been approved by planning and zoning. So, rather than tying those into the existing septic systems, we wanted to start with those right onto sewer, and then gradually, and it's gonna have to be kind of a little at a time, gradually tie the entire park in. But the mobile home park has been age-restricted for at least 20 years. There's no children in there.
Again, I was just bringing before the WPCA, for, to make you aware of it, I could certainly deal with the town attorney's office, and try to come up with wording.
Well, the three units that are being proposed to be tied in now, are they at a normal rate, like a residential unit, or is there some...
Well, those are the recreational vehicles that could be in and out, and I think, I remember the speaker for the applicant, he would, he doesn't want, $12,300 per unit won't work, and they're not generating as much in the light. Trying to see if there's something that fits, that's appropriate, you know, that works for the property owner and works for the town. And based upon the usage, and because a trailer is a much different usage than a home.
And this is something we need the input of Vinnie's office on, across the board.
Yep. I can discuss it with the town attorney, then at some point, we can come back before the WPCA for the discussion.
We get a motion to table this?
So moved.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Vicky Young.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanpano.
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Duddy.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councillor Gold.
Yes.
Councillor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councillor Felicia.
Citizen statements and petitions. Nothing. All right, we're gonna go into a regular town council meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Economic Development Commission.
Their next meeting is on December 2nd.
Parks and Rec.
They were supposed to have a meeting tonight and did not have a quorum, so they are trying to pick a date when they will have a quorum.
Police Commission.
The Police Commission met on November 12th, prior to the town council meeting. In addition to the chief's report, there was a very informative presentation by Officer Massimo Peroli. He presented a new program called Shoreline Technical Crimes Investigative Group. It's a shoreline group. He attended training for a month, and now the, a town has a number of pieces of equipment as a result. He's part of a shoreline team, a state team, and a national team, and what this is, is computer forensics. You know, we've all, I know I have, you know, you get those phone calls, and some people fall for them, and then often people go to the police station, and they say, you know, I gave $25,000, not knowing that it was going, you know, to somebody in another country. Basically, what this gives, gives him the training, the opportunity, and the availability to identify, to preserve, to analyze digital evidence in a manner that allows him to provide that evidence in a legally acceptable manner. So, again, it has all to do with cyber crimes, and it's something now that we can take, we can take advantage of in this town. So when people go into the police station, you have someone there that can do this kind of work. It's a very specialized opportunity. The other thing that the police chief asked me to mention is, the North Branford Police Department is conducting a community survey to provide them with data to assist in decision-making on a variety of community topics and perspectives. The survey is supported and analyzed by the National Institute of Justice. Right now, you can get the survey on the North Branford Police Facebook page, and by the end of this week, it will also be on the North Branford Police Department website. The police chief is really anxious, he's really interested in the community perspective, and wants to hopefully get some data that can help him make some decisions, as well as the police department. He is very, very proud of the work that the police officers are doing. They did some outstanding teamwork in some difficult cases in the last month, and they continue to work on speeding issues. I notice myself, I see more and more of them hiding around town. The next meeting will be, it's a change in the original dates, December 2nd at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Next is the Fire Commission, that's, that's me. First, first thing, that this meeting was held November 3rd, and the first, one of the things that we talked about was the new squad, squad number one, graphics completed and waiting delivery of emergency lighting. The next thing was, the chief, chief steward met with Chief Holleran, related to the new police facility and the communication system. Another thing that was talked about, discussion, ongoing radio issues with Chief Holleran and tactical communications. And the last thing I have here is, Chief Stewart talked that night, he talked about his duties and responsibilities to the department and the town of North Branford. That's it. Board of Ed.
There was no meeting between the Board of Ed and Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
There was no meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission, opposed text amendments. Nothing. East Shore District Health, I don't think we have anything.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a recommendation that this item, because there's no council representatives on this committee, and since we do have a seat on this board, I think this should work the same as the Don Cosgrove Animal Shelter, where they come in quarterly and give a report, give an update. So the, whoever the person is that sits on this board from North Branford, if you can just get them, like, on a quarterly schedule to come in and just give us an update, because there's no one here on the, on the council that is on that committee at all. So every, every time, every meeting we have, it's always no report.
Right. North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
The meeting last week was canceled because the architect was not ready. The next meeting is Wednesday, December 11th at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall.
Finance Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Blight Subcommittee.
No, I don't think they met.
No. Okay, let's move into the Town Managers' Report. Update on fire leases.
Yeah, just real quick update, that we're making progress, and that Fire Company One, I believe, has finished, and Two and Three are still in review, and it should have that hopefully over in a week or two. As soon as they contact me, we can get, move that, move that along and get that moving.
Okay. Development of sexual harassment policy and training.
Yeah, so that's something that's also in the works, and I'm hoping to have that available. Been working with Vin Marina's office and Courtney George to help us with that. And it actually ties into the Public Act, the State Public Act, that requires the town to go beyond just having a workshop and training for administrators, and anybody, and all employees will have to be going through this training. So, we're gonna tie it to the update on the sexual harassment policy that hasn't been updated in quite a while, and tie it into training that we'll be scheduling, and have Vin's office do that as well.
Okay, Michael, and update on the Poco Festival budget?
Yeah, just revised budget there, just not yet final, but getting closer. I think there's still one or two items outstanding there, and just wanted you to have an opportunity to take a look at that. And, you know, so you'll have that, we have an item later on in the agenda, to talk about the job description for the Poco Festival coordinator. We were not, the commission was not able to come to terms and negotiate with the current, or outgoing festival coordinator, so that position's vacant, and I'm looking to get a tweak to the job description later on in the agendas, but I thought the update would be helpful, too, in terms of where the budget is at the moment. And while we're on, if I could, on back to training, I heard from all members, for the town council workshop is going to be December 4th, 6 to 8. That seemed to be the date that worked for everybody. So, we may need, you know, a backup date, just in case, if we get some sort of early snowstorm. But I don't need that right now, tonight, I can, we can float another date.
It's not gonna snow.
Yeah.
The December 4th, 6 to 8?
Yes.
Okay.
And that'll be right here, in this... And that'll be right here in this chamber.
We'll try to make that a promise.
What, two hours?
Eight o'clock, yes.
I should be exempt, I just went through four, so. Okay.
Okay. Community events and presentations. Is that you, Michael?
There are none.
There are none, okay. Citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. Letter from Bill Savistino, Blight Subcommittee.
Yeah, Bill was here last meeting, had asked for inclusion in there, and that's included for your review.
Bill Savistino, 43 Sunny Side Drive. Been a whole business, I forgot last week. November 6th, the Park and Rec Department put on a wonderful lunch for the veterans again this year. It was well-attended, thanks to Park and Rec, Sean, and all the people that work there, and Luis Sabine, the social services person, had a couple of speakers as usual, everything went well, I saw new veterans, a few new guys, and Mr. Paulus was there serving lunch, so thank you. Also, and thank you, and I'm going to be going to the probably Board of Ed on Thursday night, because the school system does a great job with the, with the veterans. All four schools do something. I particularly like, I go to Jerome Harrison and get a quick breakfast, then go to the high school, and what we do there is that one or two veterans will sit at a table, and you'll have a dozen mixed group in front of you, meaning the kids, obviously, and so to get a Q and A, usually the veterans start off conversation, but it's, I enjoy doing it. I usually bring some show and tell to get the conversation started, and of course, the kids have some questions or chime in, but particularly this year, I had an article, in fact, it's right here, on the Redmond Night, Saturday, the science teacher, Kathleen Grenfield from the MBIS, does a great job with volunteers and taking these veterans out fishing. She's been doing, I don't know if anybody saw it, article in the Register, she's had many good words said about it. She was actually one of the shining stars a few years in reference to that and her teaching abilities. But anyway, she takes a lot of vets out fishing, she does it out of West Haven with her and other, six other boats, go out with a bunch of veterans. I, I volunteered in Branford for the same idea out of the Branford Yacht Co., they had like forty, forty yachts go out with two or three vets on there, and other veterans helping these guys. Believe it or not, some of the guys that come to these are out of the VA Hospital in West Haven, they're blind. They have two veins that come in from Walter Reed Hospital, so a lot of great things there. And a caveat on that was, in the article, as it goes on to say, the Boston, New England Patriots, you know, behind the scenes, a lot of these teams or whatever, do good stuff. Now, they're, they're doing something with volunteers, I don't, I don't know if I understand the whole program, but Cliff Potter, everybody knows Cliff, went to No-End to actually get nominate Kathleen to be recognized at Patriot Stadium. So, on the 29th of December, I don't know how they're going to do it, maybe it's, be halftime and you may not see it, you know, but she's going to be honored for her volunteer work. So, that's, puts North Branford on the map again. That's all on that. The other thing, I'm on the Hazards Committee, and we, because we rolled out the pink bags last week, the simple recycling, and I took a ride around my neighborhood, I saw a few, because I had stuff waiting to go out. So, a couple of people didn't get their bags, but they will, there's some here at Town Hall, and there's a couple of comments on social media, but listen, there's plenty of stuff out there, the whole idea is convenient, you don't have to take it. You know, the goodwill on Route 80 has been closed, and people know that now, so if you want to bring something, you're going to go to Branford or Hampden, as opposed to Foxville. But anyway, it'll be a good deal, the important thing, especially through our committee, is the fact that if you got something iffy, like on the textile, shoes, or handbags, something you think is, may or may not be good, they take the reins on it, and they decide, and it doesn't go in the trash. In other words, we're not paying the haul it away, for, you know, John's the haul it away, and it's not, hopefully, it's not going in the blue bin also, because that's more money, and that contaminates the blue bin. So, this simple recycling is good, especially for that third, that third portion of it, at least I think so. And the next thing was the blight we're going to talk about tonight. You've got, Mr. Marina has the new PMS draft in front of you, you've heard enough from me about that. Hopefully, the, the new members on the council are up to speed with that, and we can get this thing settled. I think it's fair. There's a few people here that like to speak about it tonight, so I won't go on any further, reserve my right to come back.
Thanks, Bill. Resignations and appointments. Anybody else? No. Resignations and appointments, I don't believe there's any. Unfinished business, discussion and action, future budget, budget planning initiative.
I would like to bring up a topic on that, Mr. Mayor. I am making a request on behalf of the North Branford Board of Ed Teacher Negotiation Team to have a special meeting, an executive session, at 6:30 PM before our next town council meeting on December 3rd. This group should include the Board of Ed negotiating team, town council, the town manager, finance director, and our board attorney. This meeting is very important because it relates to the budget and the future planning on the part of the town councils, we develop our budget. Time is of the essence. We can't wait because, as most of you know, with negotiations, there's a certain period of time, beginning and an end, and the end comes very soon in December. So, I'm making the request that we have this special meeting, I've checked it out with our town attorney, he agrees it should be a special meeting, and it should be an executive session because it's related to negotiations. I need a second.
Second.
I will, I will provide the town manager with some of the materials that I have, so that folks have it ahead of time, but I think it's very important, and I thank you for that.
Lou, you second it?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Any, any more discussion? No?
I'm just curious, is the third quick enough, is soon enough, given the, where, I don't know where you are in the negotiations to?
I, I thought about next week, but, you know, next week is Thanksgiving week, and people really are busy, and perhaps some people are going.
When's their next negotiation?
Our, our next negotiations is, is Monday night.
That's fine.
This coming Monday.
Yeah, yeah. Executive session's fine.
Of the Board of Ed's not here, that's what they. I mean, and then we have another one on the 2nd, so actually, it's going to be two before this meeting, I don't know, unless somebody could come up with another idea.
Well, just, because it's somewhat.
Add it on the November, add it on the next meeting.
Well, our next meeting is until December 3rd.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, actually.
But, but, you're going to have, you're going to have a window of time to ratify.
Right.
So, the point of this is, because, this is part of the negotiations that the subcommittee is doing, but they feel there's important information as part of strategy in negotiations that will form or could affect your judgment, but because it's part of the negotiation and the strategy, it's, it's, it's appropriate under the circumstances to do it in executive session. I don't know if it's critical for the subcommittee to hear from the town council more than it is for the subcommittee to advise the town council of what it's addressing. So, I don't know if, if you could speak to that.
In other words, we're not discussing any topics of the negotiations, we're talking about how it's going to affect the budget that this body is going to have to set for the next year.
Or whether or not it should ultimately ratify a.
Right.
Agreement that is put before it, and so you need to have that information, but I'm saying for purposes of timing, timing of being of the essence, yes, but of the critical nature, you just need this, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, the council needs this information prior to it weighing in on the ratification.
Exactly. But it will also be helpful for that negotiating team to have a sense of where the town council would be coming from, based on the budget.
Understood, okay. That side I didn't understand the back, so.
So, I don't see any other time, I understand what some people are saying, but I don't see, you know, next week is, most people are very busy.
Well, the only other thing, I know there's a board meeting on Thursday night of this week, if.
I, I can't, I would not be able to attend.
Okay, because they have the budget subcommittee meeting.
Right.
If they had this executive session with the council as part of their budget subcommittee meeting on Thursday night, that's.
But actually, this would only be the members of the board who are on the negotiations team.
I know, and they, well, they could either not have their budget subcommittee.
Right, I see what you're saying.
I mean, they, they're very short, usually, so if they, if time is of the essence, and they wanted to get it in before their negotiating sessions, that would be the only, that would be a suggestion as another time, or otherwise, we do it.
In talking with the board chair, though, I think if we can do it.
On December 3rd?
That will be, that will be okay.
Okay.
Everybody, I guess, hopefully, everybody would be able to come in.
The motion was made and seconded.
Okay. Michelle, roll, roll call, please.
Mayor Big Neil?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duvie?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Pater Oster?
Yes.
Council Pellicia?
Yes.
One other thing under future budget planning initiatives, after the last budget session, the council had formed a committee to discuss the fire pension, and there was a member of each fire company on that committee, and we met just once, and then it kind of fell silent because of everything else going on, but I think that that needs to start again before we get into budget season, so that we can have discussions with them. So, Mike, if you can get in touch with them, I know I was on it, Tom was, and Joe Fawnin was on it, from the council.
It was you?
Tom and Joe were on.
I guess that raises the, if I can, during this opportunity, liaisons for other boards and commissions is going to be next.
At the next meeting?
Okay. And we, and also, I mean, obviously, rec is looking for appointment, and then the Pension Committee is meeting, and so.
The pension meeting is the 2nd Wednesday? Right?
Yeah, 11th, so if the, at the meeting on the 3rd.
We have to make, those are appointments for the pension.
Those are, yeah, those are appointments, right.
And does the police union know that they have to appoint someone?
They have submitted a letter, and that is ready to go, so it's kind of prompted the whole, yeah, so that the rest of the membership needs to be reappointed, so they can do business.
Okay.
Or I guess they, they will continue to do business until reappointed, or someone else is appointed in their spot.
Right, okay. And I know with the fire department, because they all work, I mean, nighttime is generally better for them, which it is for myself also, and I think for Tom and Joe, what's the earliest that you guys?
6 o'clock is pushing it, but if I have to, I could come a little bit earlier.
Okay.
Same.
Six, okay.
And I, I don't want to get ahead of the game, but I've already had talks that it's possible that I might be the liaison to the fire department, if that does come to fruition next meeting, I'd like to be part of that, that group, too.
So, for a 6 o'clock meeting, and just try and get some dates from them that we can discuss and.
Right.
At least start the discussions going.
Okay. Okay. Next is update on 9/44 Totucket Road remediation.
Very briefly, since the last meeting, when all the grading was done and everything was seated, recent inspection, the grass is growing nicely over there, they're essentially done, there's a little bit of stockpile material that has to be removed, and I'll be sitting down with the town attorney's office and just working out, coming up with the final details to put closure to this item at this point, because there is a, in essence, a lean on the property, because of the judgment requiring the owner to make improvements. It would be nice to get that closed out, once everything's done, get that released, and then we, we move on at this point. And again, I'll be sitting down with the town attorney's office, working out the details of that, and may come back to the town council for some type of action.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we, we thought the, the appropriate path forward would be, once town engineer has satisfied himself that the judgment has been satisfied with, and all of the work is complete, we would then report that at this, at one of your meetings, and then we would seek your authority to prepare and issue a satisfaction of judgment. The satisfaction of judgment would be recorded on land records relating back to the original judgment, which is also on the land records, so that the world would know that the property owner satisfied the judgment that the town had obtained against it.
Okay.
Okay. So, that would be the process, once we have confirmed that everything is done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is discussion on proposed ordinance 2019-2, proposed blight ordinance.
So, there is a, we ran out to get revised copies, right, on numbering, so you all should have.
They just have the one.
Just the one.
Yes, I took.
Okay, okay.
So, following the public hearing, and at the last council meeting, there were three specific changes that I was asked to make to the ordinance. The ordinance was asked to be from an enforcement officer perspective, if you recall, there were a laundry list of potential enforcement officers, and I was directed to modify that, so it would be limited to the zoning enforcement officer only. That has been done. There was also, and this was the last minute, change, the numbering was out of order, what you have before you, it should be numbered, and these were just the various sections, one through, I believe, 11. Now, they're all in proper numerical order, and then changed the hearing officer, if you recall, we were going to make it the ZBA, and there was a, a desire to keep that here at the town council and make it a member of a three-member subcommittee of this body. And the way I had set that up, because I don't know anyone's availability or schedule, that it would be a three-member subcommittee appointed by the mayor on an ad needed basis, because this will come up, we'll have a statutory time window to establish a hearing, we'll have to caucus and find out everyone's availability, and then it would be the appointment of the mayor of whoever's available. So, those were the three changes that, that we, that we made.
We're supposed to hear from the zoning enforcement officer tonight? He's on it, he's.
Not here. I have, I personally have had discussions with him. He has expressed pros and cons to me about a blight ordinance. He, I don't think he was as familiar with the concept of the blight ordinance, and his hesitation seemed to change a little bit after I discussed it with him, that it is really intended to be a different tool for him, and not something that he was mandated to utilize, that he would retain discretion on when to use his zoning enforcement regulatory authority. that he would retain discretion on when to use his zoning enforcement, uh, regulatory authority or use the blight ordinance if, if this council were to put it into place. He felt he had achieved great success with the methods that he's currently employing, and kind of, again, originally felt that maybe it was unnecessary. Uh, I think in attending, uh, to some of the subcommittee meetings and hearing the, the potential benefits, I can't say today what his opinion is, because I haven't spoken to him in recent, recent weeks on what his opinion is, but... The last time I spoke to him, he was not, he did not express outward objection to the concept. He did have, uh, concern about there being so many, uh, people who might have the authority, which I think you've addressed, uh, and he also had concern about, uh, his, uh, his own ability to manage it on his own, you know, because he's only one person. Again, I kind of pushed back on that to say, this is just another tool. To the extent you're doing the work now, now you'll have another option at your disposal, should town council put it in place. So he didn't seem to push back, uh, on that, but I ca- yeah.
Yeah, I had the same, same conversation, and, and the reason he's here, he, he had a scheduled absence, so it's not, so he doesn't want to be here or he's afraid to speak on the subject.
Do you know how long he's going to be out?
Uh, till mid-January.
Kind of would be the person we should be talking to, though, right?
Well, I know it was a, it was a big part of, the blight committee wanted us to hear from the zoning enforcement officer. Um, it's been brought up a couple times, so I'm kind of looking forward to that part and being able to ask him questions.
With our zoning enforcement officer having questions and concerns, I'll move the table till we can hear from our zoning enforcement officer.
I'll second it.
Ms. Mayor? Yes?
Can I say something?
No.
Yes?
Ms. Mayor, I've just, uh, just as a point of order, and whether, it's a public meeting, so it's up to you whether or not you let anyone speak, I'll just say that, not to put all the burden on you, but it's up to you. Uh, but, uh, the, as a matter of course, uh, there's a motion to table that's been seconded, it's not a debatable motion. So even if, and there's something said in the public, you have to take action on the motion that's on the floor. And you have a motion to table that's been seconded, it's not a debatable motion. So as a matter of business, that's really the first order of business that the table should take.
But I can let him speak.
That's, that's totally your discretion because it's a public meeting.
Can I just ask for some clarification?
Yes.
We're tabling for...
Taking further discussion?
Or we're tabling for taking action on, on a vote? Because there's new members on the council that have not been able to add their input to this.
Exactly, so what would ultimately happen is when it comes back before the table, we would, we had some future meeting, presumably in January when the ZEO is back, it would be just as if it were put on the table tonight.
Okay.
So to the extent you had discuss, so the action that would go is presumably, you know, uh, you know, motion to approve, seconded, and then there's discussion. And just because it's a motion to approve and seconded doesn't mean it's going to get approved. That's how, but it has to be put on the floor, and the way you put it on the floor is by way of motion and second, and then you discuss it, so that would be the appropriate time for you to have your conversation.
What are we afraid of? Bill put his heart and soul into this thing, let's hear what he's got to say.
I, I, I like to hear the citizens, I like to hear their feelings, go ahead.
Yeah, I spoke to Tom right after our last council meeting, not the organization meeting. And I asked him if, you know, he had been up to speed on it, and basically, he's hung up on a couple of words. He, he put the word, he says, "What about junk?" And I didn't have a copy in front of me, I had come here to do something else, I, I'm saying, it's in there somewhere. So I went back home and read it. And he, the, the word, under debris, there's junk, and there's also, the first line says, "Anything that is visible," I can't exactly say the whole thing, "but, and can't be used for what it's intended." Could be a piece of cardboard that's, that's all wet. Yes, it's a piece of cardboard, but it can't be used for what it's intended immediately. And that's the key word in that line. So I think he's hung up on some words. I asked Mike if he could be invited to the meeting, that's when I found out that he had some medical, he's off. And I said, "You can always send in a letter, just like I sent a letter." So he didn't send a letter, so I, I don't think that's fair. I, I wanted, I want you guys to hear from him, but if he doesn't want to speak up, we're holding off. Now we're going to be another month. You guys got enough, enough on your agenda, let's get this straightened out. And by the way, let the new councils speak tonight before you want to put it to, put it to bed for tonight. Let them speak up, so we know what's going on. We, we don't know what their thoughts are. Thank you.
Okay, roll call. Thanks, Bill. I, I have a motion for Mike, it's seconded by Lou, and, uh, we need a roll call.
Mayor Vicleon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duvie?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Pattenoster?
Yes.
Council Pellicia?
Yes. Okay, next is capital, besides Bill, I like to hear comments from the citizens, so that's fine. Go ahead, Anthony, you want me to read this here?
Uh, well, basically, it's a continuation of the discussion on the 1920 through 2425 capital improvement program. You recall that at your meeting, the first part of October, you voted to send it to P&amp;Z for an 824 referral. They favorably reported back to this committee, we brought it back to the second meeting in, in October, and the discussion got hung up on the topic of the police station, uh, being in there for the current year, and do we delay this any further, or just extract that and put the CIP in place currently? There's so many variables, so many unknowns on the police station still. It'd be my recommendation that you extract that one item out of the 1920 CIP and improve the balance of it, so we don't hold the rest of these projects up. But that's, that's your call, I, I just think there's too many issues unresolved with the whole topic. Location, price, final amount, the number that's in here is 6 million, that was the number we had back at last budget cycle, which we know not to be an accurate number if we go down the path of a new building. Are we going down the path of a new building, hasn't been decided yet? So there's just so many variables, I would, I would propose that you, um, the motion there is to prove it as is, I would put the amendment to extract the reference to the police station in the 1920 CIP.
Can we do that after it's been referred to the P&amp;Z commission, and they came back with a favorable vote, which presumably includes the police station?
That is an excellent question, I don't know the answer to that. Mr. Town Attorney, do you have a...
So it was an 824 referral for...
On, on the entire CIP.
And they gave...
Now we want to amend it.
They gave a favorable report.
Correct.
But that was on a specific concept, now we're talking about a different concept, or an alteration of that concept.
Talking about extracting that one item out of the...
Right, I would refer it back.
Okay.
I have a question, though, is it gonna, I mean, is, is that number set in stone? What is so wrong with leaving, you know, we're, we're working on an idea...
Because we didn't vote on it, pardon? We didn't vote on it.
There's been no formal action to go where the other...
To put it in the CIP.
Yeah.
We, we didn't take any, the council didn't take any action, there wasn't any motion or anything. There was discussion, but no one voted to put, to approve that in the CIP.
Or conversely, to remove it during the budget process, if it had been removed.
We've still got a lot of work to do before we get to, we've still got a lot of work to do before we get to that stage.
So you're saying that we wouldn't even be able to bond for it in this next coming year? Like, we've been working on this forever.
I know.
I'm going to be pushing daisies by the time they build the police station on North Branford.
I, I'd say go to...
Way to avoid the vote.
No. All right, I'll send a, can you, um, do you need that a motion, 824, or just...
Well, so, so the purpose of the 824 is, it sets the number of votes you need to get approved, whatever you're seeking to approve. So a favorable means you only have a, a simple majority, a negative, you would need a supermajority. So arguably, depending upon the bo- this body, if you were, if you were, if you're unanimous in your action, then it would be harmless error not going back to them. Uh, the best form is to refer it back to them because you've changed the, the process. But again, if the ultimate vote here is unanimous, then the failure to go back to them is academic.
And layman's terms.
Uh, the 824 only sets the vote. If you're all going to vote for it, then going back, uh, doesn't matter.
We, we've considered taking the police figure out of the capital improvement budget. I haven't heard a decision to take it out.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, that, that would have to be the first.
I'd like a motion, yeah.
Then there would be potentially a referral.
Correct.
Correct.
And then, then he can override us and tell us where we're wrong.
If you'd like.
All right, I'm going to move to remove from the capital improvement budget for 2019-20 the allocation for the new police station, whatever that amount is.
6 million.
$6 million.
And to send it back to P&amp;Z for a revised 824?
Or do you want to separate that?
Well, maybe we should vote on the CIP first to get...
Yes.
A CIP and then do the referral as a separate. So Joe, Joe's motion was to remove that, and I will second that from the CIP for 1920.
Any more discussion? Uh, roll, roll call, Michelle, whenever you're ready.
Mayor Vicleon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
No.
Council Duvie?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Pattenoster?
Yes.
Council Pellicia?
Yes.
And now, okay, so, now I'd like to make a motion to send to Planning and Zoning for an 824 referral, the new, uh, CIP for 1920.
Through 2425, it's the whole package, is that...
Oh, it's the whole pack, okay, 2019 through 2025.
I'll second that, but I'd like to discuss it. If I understood Vin's comment correctly, if we take a consensus and find that we have a unanimous vote in favor of the capital improvement plan, as we just amended it, the issue is moot and it's not necessary to go back to P&amp;Z. We can approve capital improvement plan and do whatever we need to do without wasting another month.
But it wasn't unanimous, but it was a supermajority.
As long as it's a supermajority.
Okay. So, okay, so then...
Does everybody still feel the way they felt before, consistent with their vote on removing the $6 million from capital improvement plan? Or is anybody feel they are going to vote differently?
I'm going to vote the same way I did before.
Okay, so then I can withdraw the motion, I'll withdraw my motion and sending it to Planning and Zoning.
I'll withdraw the second.
Yeah, so it was 8-1.
8-1, yeah.
So it was a supermajority. So we're withdrew, well, I withdrew the motion based on the explanation from the town attorney. And put in layman's terms by Council Fawnin.
So now we move to adopt the 2019-2020 through 2024-2025 capital improvement plan.
As amended.
As amended. But not pursuant to the favorable review of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Correct.
Second.
Okay.
Mike, I still vote no.
You sure can.
Yeah. Okay, so did you get that motion, Michelle? Okay, I don't think she was...
It's a motion to approve.
Oh, man, this is going to hurt. I moved to approve...
Yep.
The North Branford Town Council 2019-2020 through 2024-2025.
Yep.
Capital Improvement Plan as amended, but not pursuant to the favorable review by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Lou's second, was that you?
Yes, and I seconded it.
Lou's second.
Okay, any more discussion? No, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Vicleon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
No.
Council Duvie?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Pattenoster?
Yes.
Council Pellicia?
Yes. You have more, Anthony?
Uh, just the next item.
Next on the...
I'm 13A, too.
Okay, uh, new business discussion in action, bond refunding opportunity.
Yes, periodically, we look at our outstanding debt service and explore opportunities, just as you would refinance your home mortgage, uh, interest rates are in your favor. And, uh, opportunities been identified for the 2011, uh, bond issue, which is also a refinancing, interestingly enough. And we have the potential to save about $200,000 off our debt service payments. And that's a roaming number that fluctuates, uh, based on the interest rate at the time of the closing, so it could be plus or minus that number, but it's, it's obviously a number that's worth exploring. And that's net of all the fees and other, everything else, so there are some motions that have been prepared by Glenn Santoro, our bond counsel from Robinson and Cole, and I would recommend that we approve these so we can, uh, proceed to be on schedule. Looking at a December 16 closing, uh, for the new bond, it's a, it's a negotiated settlement, negotiated, uh, issue, because it's through Piper Jaffray, and they've done the calculations, and again, the result is about a $200,000 savings in our debt service.
But that's based, that 200,000 is based on what interest rate, the interest rate of today?
No, that was based on what they projected at a rate of 1.426 would be the rate. Currently, the, the bonds are at about a 3.05, and it's bringing it down to about 1.426, which was their estimate is for that close of December 16. Obviously, no one's got a crystal ball, uh, but that's their estimate for, that was the rate that it was calculated on by the third party, Piper Jaffray. Again, that's subject to, to change, it could be in our favor, it could be against us. If it gets to the point where it's drastically against us and doesn't make sense, we'll, we'll pull the plug and not actually complete that. There's a, there's some parameters, you have to save at least 2% of, of the cost, and there's some benchmarks that the industry uses, whether it's a favorable refinancing or not. Currently, it is still, but if something were to happen catastrophic and, and the market went way out of whack against us, we would pull the plug and not do it, but you have the resolution to be in place just to have that ready.
But would it cost us anything, uh, like if we pulled the plug?
Pulled the plug.
Is there still costs associated with it?
Uh, good question, I would say probably the bond counsel, who has prepared the resolutions, would want to get paid. And I'm not sure, I, the, the third party, the, um, I'm not sure Hilltop Securities would want to get paid, but I could check on that for you. I mean, we've never had a situation where we've had to pull the plug, it's always in your back pocket in case the rates go terribly against you, till you don't go through with it. We've always had great luck on refinancing, so again, this one that we're refinancing is actually when that refinanced previously. So we've, we've saved some money throughout the years doing the refinancings, and, and I don't anticipate it being a problem again, but I just want to bring that to your attention, that it could go against us if the rates go drastically bad. But as it is predicted now, we'll save about $200,000.
That's net?
Yes, net of fees, correct.
So the fees are included, and we would say 200 after paying all costs of the closing?
Yes, sir.
And you're projecting the December 16 closing, so it's only like three, four weeks down the road?
That's correct.
I think the life of, of interest rates changing dramatically and after the time is not...
I, I would hope not, but again, you, you don't, I mean, things happen.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council adopts the attached resolution entitled "A Resolution With Respect to the Authorization Issuance and Sale of Not Exceeding $5 Million Town of North Branford, Connecticut General Obligation Refunding Bonds in Its Entirety," and instructs the Treasurer-Finance Director to report back to the town council for the final amount of the transaction and resulting savings that the town will see from this refinancing.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Vicleon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Dudy?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Goode?
Yes.
Counselor Paternoster?
Yes.
Counselor Pollicia?
Next is a discussion on North Branford Police Facility and Town Center.
Yeah, I, I, just to carry over, because there is obviously a threshold question that the council has to deal with, with respect to the, the facility, and obviously, we talked about the six million dollar placeholder and, and, uh, whether or not this is gonna be voted on from the council, uh, as, or rule out a renovation project, because that was discussed and was never really, uh, voted on, or if it's going to be, uh, a build new facility. The architect is going to meet again, uh, to continue to finish up, uh, their plans. So I think, y- y- you know, there should be some thought, um, there should be a vote at some point as to the direction of where the council wants to go. I don't know if there's any additional information, I know that there are new members, uh, that they probably want to have a tour, they want to get in, they want to talk, uh, you know, gather information to make an informed decision, so I'm not trying to push the issue, I'm just, I think it should remain, I would recommend it remain on the, uh, agenda, uh, or we, we table and, 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 you know, bring it back when, when ready. But I think ultimately, this council, this group will have to decide the fate of the, of the facility.
I think we need to bring it back when it's ready. I think we don't have enough. I've heard numbers from six million to over ten. I've heard the square footage range from, uh, twice what it is now to one and a half times what it is now. Um, I know for me, I'd like to have some more definitive information before I voted on it.
I mean, where, where is the architect at? Is he designing new to present to us? Is that the only thing that he's working on, is designing new?
Right.
Because that, that really defeats the whole purpose that we discussed a year and a half, two years ago, about getting cost and having, presenting it to the public to get their input. If he's only designing new, then that takes everything else off the table.
Yeah, I think we have to see-
They, they kind of, they kinda had to rule out refurbish, because like Al Rose said, the old part of the building was built as a house.
Right.
And you can't, you can't put a brand-new commercial facility i- in a house. The fire codes don't match, you know, um, there's so many problems with the old facility. And, and, you know, we sat in numerous meetings, and everybody we talked to said, "You just can't make it do, just can't do it."
So-
Unless, unless you strip the whole place out, re- refurbish all the rafters and everything else to a commercial grade, you're not gonna do it.
Actually, I think Al basically said it would be more costly to renovate, to have a new building.
So, so where are they at, in square footage? Like, how big of a facility is he, is the design right now?
We're still, we're still working on that.
I think it depends on what we're, what we're, the work we're doing now across the street from the current station, right? We don't know that information yet.
That, that's why, that's, that's why I voted, the way I voted was to, to do it back, because we're five months into this budget year for the capital improvement plan, and we s- we s- we don't have any answers yet, so we're still, the facility committee is still working on that, and that's, that's what we're waiting for now.
And it's unfortunate that, that the architect was not ready for a meeting last week, and we had to cancel.
Okay, I mean, I just-
I think there was enough evidence, and, or I should say, there was enough factual history of the building to say that the group was ruling out the fact of doing a renovation, whether it was a two million, or one million, or two million dollar, two, two and a half million dollar renovation to that building, uh, was not the money well-spent, uh, because of the superstructure, basically a w- a ranch with a walkout basement. It's not designed as a future, uh, twenty-first century type of, of, of building, and, uh, but however, it never got to the point where the council had ruled, one way or the other, renovate and b- and, and ex- renovate and build a addition, or build as new. And the subcommittee, uh, has gone off in terms of engaging the architect as build new, and then we leaped from a few different sites to the now recommended site across the street, uh, at three oh five.
Michael, we, we never, we never saw prices on any of this stuff. All, all we've been talking about is new. Uh, I haven't seen anything about renovating, or, or additions, or anything like that. That's kind of been pushed to the wayside. They're like, know more about it before-
It would appear that it was going to be more costly to renovate than it was. Right, but walls we ha- I mean, really, the walls we have is hearsay. You know, I hear people saying we have facts, and we have, uh, proof, and we have this and that, yet I don't think that anyone's seen it. Well, I think then behooves us to have the architect come to a town council.
As soon as we get closer to, to, to a factual number, then we could have the architect come in and give a presentation.
Shouldn't the subcommittee submit to us? This is renovation, this is new, this is why we think this is better, shouldn't we just, shouldn't we get something from them that's a, a logical recommendation?
Yeah, e- early on, though, I, I believe that the, the group looked at the L-shaped, uh, expansion, uh, concept, and what you would get for, I believe it was two to two and a half million dollars, and, and, uh, it, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't mu- it would buy you, uh, ex- some space and some time in terms of future growth, but, but certainly not address all of the issues, only a, a certain percentage of the issues that they were dealing with.
Where, where are we growing to? I mean, that's a, that's a, that, I mean, what, what's growing?
We need to come up with the square footage first.
I mean, what's, I mean, when you say growing, um, is, what's the, what's the rate of the town growth in the last ten years, five years, one year? I mean, what, you, you know, I don't, I don't understand.
It's not, it's not the growth rate of the town, it's the growth rate that the police department needs for twenty-four officers or twenty-five officers. That, that's the size they, they build on. They build on the size of the department, they don't build on the size of the town.
Yeah, I think the original building was built for probably half that, for about, probably about twelve officers.
For ten officers.
Yeah.
Eight officers, when it was built in nineteen-
Well, I remember their original presentation to us, they were planning for, like, in the thirties for officers, which just seemed-
No, that's, that's come back.
Okay, see, that's all information that we don't know.
Well, I think what I would do is ask Mike to put on the agenda for the next, that committee meeting, then to come up with what is being asked here, for some recommendations from the committee and some information. And instead of just constantly just having a architect's report, let's also let the committee make some recommendations.
There's only one thing that's really clear to me from this discussion, and that is how little we, as a body, know and understand about this process. I frankly think it's critical that we re-enlist Al to be on that subcommittee, or somehow integral in the planning, design, and ultimate decision on this police station.
Al did make the request that somehow he can continue to be involved in that subcommittee, right?
He would have to be appointed, but that's-
Right, he would have to be appointed, but he did ask us that.
Then let's take advantage of his expertise, because we don't have it.
And he does want to continue. He did ask us that. I don't know how we go about that, do we just- Well, at the next meeting, we, when we do resi- or when we do appointments to other things, we can just put it on the agenda.
Civilian member.
Yeah.
Hey, Mike, um, what I'd like to say is that as a new member, and not being involved with you prior, I went last Friday, met with the chief, thanks, Mike, and he gave me a tour of, of the building as a newbie, seeing it for the first time. And he did a very good job. He didn't influence me at all, he didn't sway me at, either way. Um, and not being privy to all your information, something needs to be done there. No questions asked. I mean, as a taxpayer, as a taxpayer, that, something has to be done. For me, being new, it was very enlightening because of things, you drive by the building, it looks really nice, you know, it looks pretty good. But then you get inside the building, and like I say, the chief, he just showed me things. He didn't say, "Well, this, there, this, or that." Something needs to be done there, and my first inclination is, is that we're not gonna get our, I'm not a builder, but you're not gonna get a bang for, uh, remodeling that place, uh, because there's too many things going on in that place, that, in my opinion, um, when I walked in, the first thing that really bothered me was, we had an officer speaking to a woman who had issues with her ex-husband in the lobby, sitting there, and it's like, we don't have any, uh, a room for them to go in. So little things like that, that I observed, that I think we really have to get our ducks in a row on this and do it right from the start, whatever it is. I mean, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a senior citizen, but whatever we do, we gotta do it right. Too many times in this town, we do things where we do something and we don't do it the right way, and we don't look for the future, and then we come back and bite us in the butt. This is something I, I'm a firm believer in, these women and guys are putting their lives on earth, and we have to make them feel comfortable at their place, whatever it is. So I agree with everybody that, I like, a little more information as being a new guy, but I do believe something needs to be done there. But I did take a tour of it, and it is, in my mind, pretty bad.
Would, do you want to go so far as to, uh, add, uh, the architect, Bill Silver, to come and recap in terms, I think?
Well, we have a meeting, um-
We have a meeting in December.
We have a meeting in December, so we'll just-
Well, your meeting's after our first meeting, so you want this on the agenda for the second meeting?
For the second meeting. Why don't, and we'll, and put on the, please put on the agenda that the committee needs to come up with some recommendations and some information, not just from the architect, but from the committee. Alright, so have the, have the advisory committee, uh, meet, uh, which, so, so on the third, we may have a, a decision for, to put Al-
Yeah, that'll be-
On, and then, then they meet, and then come back for the second meeting in December. And don't you go picking the daisies up off my head.
Alright, we all set?
Yep.
Next is the discussion on, on approval of HGAC Buy Membership Application.
Yeah, so this is really a, um, the purchase ordinance allows us to piggyback on to other contracts and other consortiums, and, uh, in this case, it's a organization out of Texas. Um, I did, uh, also get some additional supplemental, uh, information from Chief Seward, uh, was, um, uh, very helpful, informative in terms of, um, providing, um, the amount of, uh, list of towns that already are on it, uh, and it's a great avenue, uh, for, uh, fire safety, uh, equipment, apparatus, if you will. This does not obligate the, the town to go with this, uh, uh, company or organization, it just merely gives us another, um, tool in the toolbox, so to speak, to, to have them as an opportunity to bid, much like we would if we wanted to piggyback on Branford or East Haven, or, or anywhere else, and, or the state of Connecticut that we do, we go off their state bids or the other consortiums. This just opens a door, it just broadens, uh, the availability of what we can do.
There's nothing in our packet on this. Like, there's no motion, there's no, I don't find anything, we just went from the refunding in our packet, and then the next thing we have is the billing services for the ambulance. And I don't see anything-
You don't have the-
Page ninety-five of the, uh, tablet.
Yeah, I got that.
Uh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought that was all part of the refund.
No.
My mistake.
Mike, is there a cost, uh, as far as joining this organization?
No, I, I think all the, and I'll have the chief speak to it, but I, I think the only requirement was to have somebody, uh, trained in a webinar, which the chief did, I believe, if you want to speak to that, is there any-
Sure. Good evening. Um, as Michael said, uh, back in September, I sent a, uh, an email to the purchasing assistant and to the town manager, uh, with the inside of information that I had been provided with after meeting with the area fire chiefs. And more and more fire departments, not only in Connecticut, but across the US, are moving to, uh, purchasing consortiums. It provides you with a better mechanism to get what communities need, uh, not necessarily at a cheaper cost, but in, in easier fashion. Technically, it doesn't circumvent the bidding process, this is the bidding process that has already been formulated through, uh, HGAC Buy. In fact, it, it does save the chief time and effort, it saves the town money, as opposed to going out and publicly advertising and having bid openings, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and it also allows you to, uh, go through the vendor list that is already approved, um, meet all this, uh, variety of state and federal requirements for bidding processes, and, uh, pick a vendor, and then go through a specific type of, uh, apparatus model, and a, uh, basically an a la carte menu of equipment, uh, that you would put on, to the apparatus. Uh, I can tell you that, uh, Chester just bought two apparatus off HGAC Buy, Willamette recently bought one, Westfield Fire Department, which is a subdivision of Middletown, are all recently bought apparatus through, uh, HGAC Buy. So what it does require is an inter-local agreement, and that's done through the application process, and as Michael said, the single requirement is that a member of the, the, uh, the, a user of this system, uh, takes play in a, takes part in a webinar, which was done, uh, about a month ago. Uh, so it, it gives us, as Michael said, another avenue to look at purchasing, and it's not only limited to fire apparatus, it's police vehicles, it's public works, it's construction equipment, it's equipment from the Board of Education, and on the list that you should have, that accompanies my, uh, my letter that explains the process to our Board of Fire Commissioners, uh, you should have the complete list of all municipalities in Connecticut that already use HGAC Buy, uh, to purchase, uh, commodities. So it will, it will be a significant benefit for the town to be able to expedite the process, uh, but also, uh, keep in line with the product that, uh, the town has opted to use for, for many, many years now, and the reasons are substantiated in that letter that went to the, the town manager, that you should have a copy of.
And the town attorney has also had a chance to review.
Yes.
This complies with our town bidding regulation?
For the ordinance, yeah, on, on, allow, allowing us to, to piggyback. Yeah, I think we made that change not more than-
Yeah, we made it recently, within the last two years.
Yes.
Yeah, for sure.
No, that was the, uh, the, the change we made before the most recent change-
Correct.
So that we could buy component parts.
Correct.
Right, so it's-
So it was, it was relatively-
It was the piggyback about a year, year and a half ago, I would say.
Yes.
So, uh, North Branford Town Code, Chapter eighty-four, Purchasing, Section eighty-four twenty, Cooperative Purchasing States, "The purchasing agent shall have the authority to join with other units of government in cooperative purchasing plans on an equitable basis and large bulk purchasing when the best interest of the town will be served thereby."
Thank you.
So just, it's a, a simple motion to approve, um, the, the, uh, you are joining with application to HGAC Buy.
I'll make that motion.
Roll, roll call, Michelle.
Mayor Viclium?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Dudy?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Goode?
Yes.
Counselor Paternoster?
Yes.
Counselor Pollicia?
Okay, next is a discussion on award of RFP number one, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, billing services for ambulance fire.
Yeah, my, my apologies, that, that, it's actually, we, we approved the RFP, this is the actual contract, the app, the, uh, agreement, uh, for ComStar, which has, uh, been reviewed, um, and approved, uh, the ongoing ComStar with ambulance billing, so it is not the RFP, it's the actual, uh, ComStar requirement, the contract agreement, and it's been reviewed by the town attorney as well.
So then it's to approve the contract with ComStar?
Correct.
Correct. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with ComStar, uh, for billing services for ambulance and fire, as presented.
Discussion?
Just have a question, were there any, just being new to the process, were there any major changes to previous contracts?
Not that I'm aware of, no. It's pretty, uh, we've had a great track record now.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
Councilor Felicia?
Yes.
All right, next is a review of job description for the Potato and Corn Festival Coordinator.
Yeah, so one pager with some highlighted yellow, changes in yellow, just three areas at the top administratively, just preparing and altering, adhering to the budget, excuse me, and social media, and then, as well as the office hours and updates to the Recreation Commission. And this is before you, because we're in the process, the current coordinator, weren't able to come to terms with going forward, and having her come back for the next season with respect to the hourly rate and the amount of work that's involved, so we find ourselves back at square one, and an opportunity to revise the job description, it obviously comes before you for any changes in job descriptions, and that's why it's, that's why it's here.
So I'm assuming that Sean, as the Director of Park and Rec and the Commission, has seen, has made these recommendations, that's where these are coming from?
Correct.
One here?
That's the best thing.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the job description for the Potato and Corn Festival Coordinator as amended.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, if I could, just, so we're, I think, hopefully have an approval here, just thinking ahead, where the council had given the, the commission the authority to review and go through the process, I would obviously assist and work with them, it's going to be a tough position to fill, it always is, it's a unique, kind of a niche area, but one of the things in discussion that came up with is the budget of, I believe we're working on a budget of twenty-two thousand, very, very simple math of a rate of twenty-two dollars an hour at a thousand hours for the, for the festival. We'll go forward, we'll do that, I'm just throwing to the, to the council, because I believe the, the members themselves here may have questions as to if we get ourselves in a situation where we can get somebody for twenty-four dollars an hour, but reduce the, reduce the amount of hours, still get the job done, in say, eight or nine hundred hours, or something like that, you know, to make, make the math work, would they have the authority of the council to go forward and have some wiggle room like that, and I'm just looking for help in, in the market, because I have no idea who's out there.
So, I guess my question would be, is there, like, a maximum dollar amount that they're looking at, I mean, I don't, personally, I don't care how it's structured, they're the ones that have to work with the person, so if historically, the job has taken less than a thousand hours, because the person can do a lot, you know, via computer, and not being in the office all the time, and get everything done that is supposed to be done, and it doesn't take a thousand hours, if it's the total dollar amount that you're looking at spending, if it's twenty-two or twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, and they don't use the thousand hours, to me, if the person can work efficiently and get the job done, and that's what you're willing to pay someone, then that's, that's fine, it's within the budget, they know that it's a cost that they have to cover within the Potato and Corn Festival budget, there's nothing in the general fund that comes, that pays for that, it all has to come out of the budget for the Potato and Corn Festival. And I think that was part of our discussion earlier this year in March, when we did vote to give them the authority to hire, because it is a part-time position, we don't get involved in those, just as we don't in their summer help, their camp counselors, their, who runs their summer program, because they're all part-time positions, so I don't really see why we have to, you know, like, if they know that they have X number of dollars, and that's all they can spend, then that's fine with me, because it's, it's coming out of a separate budget, it's not coming out of a general fund, and they know what that is...
What was your feel on, on the amount? What are you getting for a feedback?
Well, from the, the, from Gail and Coordinator, she, she was looking to come back for thirty-five dollars an hour.
It's quite an increase from twenty-two dollars an hour.
Yeah, so, you know, it never got, it never got out of committee, so it's, it never got out of the commission level, but again, I don't know where the market's going to be, but if, if, and I think there, clearly, the data shows that we haven't touched a thousand hours, that I've seen the last three years, if we have it at all, so I think there's, there's a little bit of negotiations that could help the commission in this process, looking for a successor. So, yeah, twenty-two is the, sort of the ceiling, but if in any way we figure out how to, how to get the work done...
Well, and, and the other thing is, if you have to become creative in, in using, because I know it's been thrown around as far as getting a percentage of sponsorships, or whatever, you know, pick something off of the thing, you know, that they go out and work, and, so if they, if they bring in thirty thousand dollars worth of sponsorships, and they, the commission wants to pay a percentage of, as an incentive, to get more sponsorships, I mean, personally, I don't have a problem with that either. If it's, I mean, I see in this year's, they had five thousand in sponsorships, and I know in the past, that number has been significantly more on that, so if that's something that helps bring in more revenue to, and constitutes being able to supplement the salary, and if it's a negotiating thing, I, I don't, personally, I don't see a problem, I don't know about the person, the council, I mean, if the person, if that's what they're doing and working in getting those sponsorships, I, I don't see what the problem is to give them a percentage of those sponsorships.
Yeah, that's quite a jump, but if, I mean, if we have a pool of money, you know, and we could get the job done, less than a thousand hours, you know?
Right, or like, yeah...
We could fluctuate...
You, you have two, two variables, right, you have the fluctuation of the, well, the rate in hours, but as Rose just introduced, the incentivizing someone to come in to say, here's your target, you get that, great, that's, that, that helps pay for your fee and, 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 and a percentage, whatever it's carved up, and, and the balance goes to the festival, that's a, that's a win-win.
It's no different than on the amusement rides, we get a percentage of the tick, of what the amusement rides bring in, we get a small percentage of it, so I don't see any difference in giving the coordinator a percentage of sponsorships, because that's all, that's not, you know, a cost, you're, that's helping supplement the program, the festival.
Yeah, okay, I need...
I would say, just, just be careful that it's transparent and documented, so there's no, there's no... They're sending a check into the festival, so...
Yeah, I'm just saying, just to make sure that there's nothing, nothing crazy goes on, or anything like that, I mean, we have a budget of X number of dollars, so here's, here's the total...
I agree with Rose, I think it's a sensible thing to do, it makes sense to me. Like you said, it's a win-win situation.
Yeah, I, I think that you may want to hear from the, from the commission, maybe not in the interest of time, I understand that, but, because it's almost like we're at a point, if we incentivize Gail enough, she'd be coming back to take the job, so whether then, you know, they want to consider that, or go back and look at that, and go with the product you know, versus having to go out into the market and say, listen, we'll incentivize you to this point, and work the hours, and work the rate, you know, I think that's what, you know...
Hi, Steve.
If I, if I may, I think the, the struggle is you guys put a cap on what we're allowed to negotiate, so if you were going to give us this ability to negotiate more, I don't know, procedure, but I assume you may have to revoke, because you put a ceiling cap on what we're allowed to negotiate.
So is there, is there a number, is there a salary?
I think, on the record, on the March ninth, it was not to exceed twenty-two thousand.
Right, so what would be your recommendation, what would you be looking for, and if you need to meet and come back to us at another...
Yeah, I want to speak on behalf of the three commission members.
So if you want to come back to the council, that's, that's fine, if you want to discuss it as a commission in with Sean.
And we also weren't sure if we were allowed to negotiate or entertain any negotiations as far as percentages or commission-based.
I, I think, I think Mike should sit in on that, and you could probably steer him in the direction, you know, if you get a cap of twenty-two or twenty-five thousand, and, you know, a percentage of, you know, sponsorship, you know, work out some kind of deal.
Right, I can go back and work with the commission, we can hammer it all out.
Yeah, you can come back to us, that's fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I think there's still a motion there, and I jumped in on the discussion.
So the, the motion was for the job description?
To approve the job description.
We made a motion, and it was seconded.
It was seconded.
Do we, I don't know, was seconded?
I seconded it.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
For the job, this is just for the job description, to approve the job description.
Okay, any more discussion? No, roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampaano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Judy?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Abstain.
Counselor Felicia?
Yes.
Okay, next is financial report, September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Good evening, for the benefit of the new council members, on a monthly basis, I provide the council with a budget-to-actual comparison on both the revenues and expenses, and then on the left-hand side of the page compares it to the prior year, to see how we're tracking, and to avoid any surprises come June thirtieth. Look at the top line, kind of as one of the key points, the property taxes, current collections. Last year, fifty-three point five percent at this time, this year, fifty-three point two, again, nothing too crazy, the overall revenue appears to be about a one percent below last year, again, a lot of it is the other income, again, nothing to be concerned about at this point yet. The expenditure side of the house, look to see if anybody's over a hundred percent, as of now, no one's over a hundred percent budget, again, appears to be a little bit about half a point above last year's at this point, if you look at the Board of Ed, that's, that's the big driver, obviously, the big expense line on the town budget is the Board of Ed, they appear to be up significantly, so there's some savings on the other departments. Again, the report remains unremarkable, there's nothing really to be overly concerned with at this point, and if anybody, any of the new members has any questions at any time, after you get this, if you want to give me a call, or shoot me an email, I can respond to any concerns or questions you have that are specific to a line item that may jump out at you, or, or a question you may have, or ask me at the meeting, and I can research it and send it back by email.
Okay, thanks, Anthony. Next is contingency appropriation communications maintenance.
Yeah, there was, the bid for the radio maintenance for police, fire, and public works was opened after the budget was adopted this year, and as a result, there's a shortfall in that line item of about forty-five hundred dollars. There are four components to the bid, there's items that are attributable to Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department, and something called common items, which are basically the console and the microwave link to Ochenkowsky, things that aren't identifiable to one specific faction, and those were not budgeted in the current year, and that's where the majority of the shortfall is, the, the line items themselves really had no major differences in the case of, let's say, the police, the budget was ten oh sixty-seven, and it came in at ten one sixteen, fire was eleven five sixty-one, it came in at twelve six roughly, public works twenty-seven thirty-four, came in twenty-seven thirty-six, almost right on the number, the big thing was the common piece was not budgeted, so the combined of all those four pieces results in a shortfall of about forty-five hundred dollars to accommodate contingency.
Make a motion that the town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency account one oh one dash forty-seven oh three dash seven six zero dash zero 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 zero, and transfer into the appropriate accounts as soon as possible for the following purpose, communication maintenance, forty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampaano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Judy?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
Counselor Felicia?
Yes.
Okay, next is appropriation transfers.
Two small transfers before you tonight, one in the Police Department, to allow them to purchase new criminal justice, or criminal statute books, I should say, and the second in the EDC Department, they want to utilize constant contact as a means to get the word out to the businesses in town a little more easier, and facilitate a little greater response, they hope, amongst the business community, so that's one fifty in the Police Department, they're going from their training, professional development, to books and publications, and in the EDC, to go from their printing and binding to other contractual.
What is constant contract?
It's an email...
It's an email service that you feed, and it shoots out repetitive emails.
Okay.
I'll move the appropriation transfers.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampaano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Judy?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
Counselor Felicia?
Yes.
Okay, we have approval of tax refunds.
So moved, second.
Anthony, the question on this is, what's these abatements? We've got about thirty pages of them.
Nineteen pages, it's like all of the tax refunds, someone has to, the citizen has to sign off on?
Right.
We've never gotten these before, so I was just curious as to what these were, too.
The refunds?
No, 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 all the same things.
Form requests for refund. All the pages that are attached. Twenty pages. Pages of requests for refunds.
Yeah, those are things that the clerk typically signs, those shouldn't have gone in your packet.
Oh, okay.
Those are things, thus, the, the way it works is that the taxpayer overpays, they contact the tax office and say, hey, I'm Rose, I overhit my tax, and we send this form out to them, Rose has to sign it, it gets captured, gets before you guys, then the clerk has to sign off on this after it goes by the council, gets blessed, so these should never have been in your packet, apologize for that, this is just...
We just get the form.
You get the list, and this is behind the scenes what happens, it generates that list, and then after Michelle gets the hard copy, she signs off on them, and then gives them back to Patty, and pays the person back, and it's...
We ignore all these forms. Took us a whole weekend to read a hundred and thirty pages of town council, you know, information.
No, I'm sorry.
I don't think we voted yet.
Okay.
Okay. Michelle, roll, roll call. Roll call.
Sure. Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampaano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Judy?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
And Counselor Felicia?
Yes.
Okay, we have approval of tax refunds.
So moved, second.
Anthony, the question on this is, what's these abatements? We've got about thirty pages of them.
Nineteen pages, it's like all of the tax refunds, someone has to, the citizen has to sign off on?
Right.
We've never gotten these before, so I was just curious as to what these were, too.
The refunds?
No, 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 all the same things.
Form requests for refund. All the pages that are attached. Twenty pages of requests for refunds.
Yeah, those are things that the clerk typically signs, those shouldn't have gone in your packet.
Oh, okay.
Those are things, thus, the, the way it works is that the taxpayer overpays, they contact the tax office and say, hey, I'm Rose, I overhit my tax, and we send this form out to them, Rose has to sign it, it gets captured, gets before you guys, then the clerk has to sign off on this after it goes by the council, gets blessed, so these should never have been in your packet, apologize for that, this is just...
We just get the form.
You get the list, and this is behind the scenes what happens, it generates that list, and then after Michelle gets the hard copy, she signs off on them, and then gives them back to Patty, and pays the person back, and it's...
We ignore all these forms. Took us a whole weekend to read a hundred and thirty pages of town council, you know, information.
No, I'm sorry.
I don't think we voted yet.
Okay.
Okay. Michelle, roll, roll call. Roll call.
Sure. Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampaano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Judy?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
And Counselor Felicia?
Yes.
All right, next we have citizen statements and petitions.
Good evening, Debbie Stone, Old Post Road, thank you for your service, first of all, I want to thank you, I know it's not easy to sit on these boards, and I'm kind and you'd like to see them, I'd really like you to take a look at them, because if he doesn't come back until January and you don't hear from him until January or February if he's out on a medical leave, that's going on about a year, and I know what you said, Murray, that that's kind of a short time for some of the things that go on on the council. But if you live next door to this, it's not a short time. And this is not, you know, war-torn Baghdad. This is Old Post Road in Northford.
Can I see those?
You may. They are directly diagonal, when I pull out my driveway. My dad lives next door to me, my neighbor to sit out in her backyard, that's our view. So while I understand what you're trying to do and hear from everybody, you also have to understand that unless one of you lives next door to that blight, it's not timely to you. And waiting till January now or February, I think, does a disservice to what these people are asking.
Before we go too far, we have handled blight through our town attorney before.
Yes, you have, and-
So we still handle blight through our town attorney. So this is not a solve-all problem for everything.
No.
It's still got to go through the town attorney when it gets to that stage.
Absolutely, and Mr. Hogarty's been great.
We're not losing any steps, we're not setback, we still have a town attorney that can address those issues.
I agree, but I also disagree, Mr. Hogarty has been great in this situation, he's had it cleaned up once, it is abandoned, it is animal-infested, we've, we've talked to Mr. Hogarty and all we got was him to mow it, the owners to mow it. It's not, it's not, it hasn't gone, finished going through probate, it's been, you know, like, there's a lot, and we need your help, I don't know what else to say, that, you know, my house is setback, probably doesn't affect my town, my property value, but, you know, that's in Northford, Connecticut.
Pass them this way.
I'll take them after.
Thank you.
Is there something the town can do now without that ordinance? I mean, is there things that-
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it depends, I haven't seen the pictures, but it could be a zoning violation. So it may be a violation of a number of other regulations, but it would be up to the zoning enforcement officer to enforce those regulations by issuing some form of a cease and desist, and then that would start the regulatory process.
So there should be something that could be done now without that blight ordinance?
There's always some alternative, again, the blight ordinance is not the only thing that can be done for blight. Blight is, can be addressed through other zoning mechanisms that are currently available.
Mr. Hogarty currently has a complaint on that property, more than one complaint.
So it's, that's, that's a different issue than, it's separate from the blight ordinance. If the blight ordinance were in place and it were not, it was not used, the complaint would still remain.
Right.
So this is, I don't think necessarily I need a blight ordinance to get this addressed.
The town needs to do something.
There's a, what I'm hearing is there's a failure of action on the part of the town staff, which I'm not validating, I'm simply interpreting what I think I am hearing. Is that, would that be fair? Ma'am?
She made the complaint, so you might want to contact her. Our staff at Old Post Road. The blight ordinance would give the zoning enforcement officer a tool to enforce it. Right now, he does not have the authorities that are in that blight ordinance. He does have authority, I get that, but I've been told they don't have the ordinance and to come and talk to blight people and help pursue this. There is definitely a complaint in motion right now, but that property's been abandoned and like that for almost a year.
So what I, what I will do, I'm scheduled to be here tomorrow, normally I'm here on Wednesday mornings, so my hour's going to be slightly different tomorrow, but I'll meet with the town manager. So in the absence of Mr. Hogarty, who, is there a temporary designee who's going to be managing it? And I could speak to that person and see if I can get a copy of that complaint.
Attorney Moreno, that was one of the concerns I had with the ordinance, is that, correct me if I'm wrong, it only designated him as the person to enforce it, and one of the things I was going to suggest is that you, obviously now it's even more pertinent, but somebody as a backup, should they be out on extended leave or something like that?
Sure, and that's something we could add in, we went from an army down to a soldier, but it could be, or his designee, his or her designee, or you could have someone specifically as backup. So, but we could address that at the appropriate time, but I don't disagree with your statement.
Good evening, my name is Art Kaplan, I reside at fifteen Dogwood Road in the North Branford section. Let me first congratulate the newly-elected members of the town council. Secondly, I'd like to thank the architects of the blight ordinance also recognized as the performance and property maintenance standards for initiating a program that will enhance our community. At the previous town council meeting, it was decided it would be appropriate for the newly-elected members of the town council to hear the advantages of this ordinance and feel the opinions of those individuals favoring the implementation and enforcement of this blight ordinance would have a positive impact on our community. Although the townspeople have witnessed significant improvement in town's economic growth, the ability to operate, the finances of the town with minimal increases in taxes, this subject has been a concern of many. Unfortunately, residents are not as vocal as they should be until they are exposed to unsightly unhealthy conditions that depreciate the value of their property. This ordinance, this ordinance, similar in content with neighboring communities, will only be effective if and when implemented and enforced and does not cause hard feelings with their neighbors. I've researched neighboring communities ordinances and blight standards and would like to offer my findings. Three neighboring communities were researched relating to the varying standards established by each of these communities. The communities are Madison, Guilford, and Branford. The ordinance is focused on relatively the same concerns. Those residents that are considered blight with broken windows, unhinged doors that are considered unsafe, fire hazards, others possessing a serious or immediate danger to safety or general welfare of the community, collapsing and seriously damaged properties, persistent accumulation of excessive amount of garbage or trash, chronologically neglected and/or inoperable motor vehicles, cameras, trailers, and boats, laws and landscaping means, meaning overgrown grass and vegetation allowed to reach and maintain a height of twelve inches. All communities were in agreement that the existence of dilapidated, damaged, unrepaired, unmaintained, and/or litter-strewn properties referred to as blight can affect the property values of abating properties of those in the immediate neighborhood and in some cases have a negative impact on the entire community, and that further blighted properties can threaten the health, safety, and welfare of area residences and business opportunities. All named communities stated that they did not want to implement an ordinance that would be perceived as punitive, but wanted something to be put in place that exemplifies compassion and to strive to help those who are unable to take care of their properties. One community suggested having private contractors to perform pro bono work or encourage volunteer groups to raise money to help residents experiencing hardship. One member of an ordinance committee who is a firefighter and paramedic stated that blight properties can be a serious problem for first responders as well as a safety hazard and can cause an economic impact on a neighborhood which affects the resale values of homes. An associate member stated an ordinance is not to be implemented to just set fines and take people to court. Provisions for people who are elderly or people who have financial difficulties or mental health problems need to be made available. This individual is one who has served on various committees and is also aware of neighboring towns experiencing an increase in blight properties. She firmly believes that if an ordinance is enacted, it's got to have enforcement behind it. In summary, neighboring communities concentrate on the adverse impact and economic well-being of their communities regarding the health and safety of their residents. Many of these properties can be rehabilitated, restructured, or reused so as to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing as well as ancillary commercial facilities. Homes on Route Eighty, the main artery to North Branford, have dilapidated picket fences. An apartment further up Route Eighty has had a mattress and other furniture on Route Eighty for three weeks. Homes have extension cords hanging out of their windows, ladders, tarps alongside their structures, carports filled with stuff blocking an exit from the structure, toilets, et cetera, on front lawns. Most importantly, all communities were sensitive to the private property rights of the citizens of the communities as well as to provide services to those extenuating circumstances due to age, disabilities, or economic situations, and referring those to local agencies for assistance. Your immediate response to this made concerns of utmost importance and must be not tabled for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
As Bill said, Mr. Town, obviously pretty disappointing tonight. I told Tom, I told you guys in a previous situation that I think Tom does a good job, and he does, he handles other situations, but I can recall something that you haven't heard yet. A year ago, January, I went to a planning zoning meeting, Tom, I don't know if anyone knows it, Tom was doing a six-month report, and he had all the nuisance ordinances, the rooster crowing and the fences that don't falling down, and then he had like six or seven blight. Now, that's what we're, we're talking about blight. Although we're going to be talking exchange right now, it's my case that, out of the concern for blight is you have people in different stages, people that are going to town and pulling out, but two years down the road is going to be the worst thing. So, so he had the lady who was reporting on the blight. Now, he had reported on eighteen Sunny Side Drive before. All of a sudden, I happened to just come into that meeting, I didn't even know he was going to talk about his report. All of a sudden, eighteen Sunny Side, which is probably the worst of them all, is not on the, not on his report. So, you know, planning zoning unless you're under caring or an applicant, you don't get to talk. And I raised my hand and Tom, Harry, wasn't going to let me talk, but Harry knew what I was going to talk about. So I said, Tom, why is eighteen not on the list? And he says, basically, he doesn't know what to do. Now, again, I'm saying, I like Tom, but you got one guy in a position, and I gotta say it, he didn't know what to do. And he's our officer. That's, that's not the way it should be. Now, I even said at one of the meetings, when you get a serious case like that, if you remember, Chief Sures brought up, we should have a, we can reconvene that public service, communications, and add welfare to it, so that would be a help for town, and it'd be help for the police or in the county services office. So, because we, we got some seniors in town probably able to help to this thing. But the important thing is, Tom, Tom dropped the ball there. And if, if anybody's seen the video that I talked about, that Channel Eight government's still on YouTube, the man said himself, and asked by the reporter, did they threaten you, fine? He says, yeah, they threatened fine, but they didn't fine. We wouldn't be talking about this thing tonight if someone would have fined them maybe years ago. So, just like Mr. Kaplan just said, it's got to be done, we got to break the severe cases, they got to be fined, and that's it. I mean, I have to, I don't have to say a hundred dollars a day, no one's going to pay that. A hundred dollars a month, I'd be thinking about it if I'm the person. Twelve months, that's twelve hundred, I owe you. Yes, I'm real disappointed tonight, and disappointed more that the fact that, you know, you started making motion and Mr. Plankton wanted to offer some, his opinion. You couldn't be sitting at that motion and letting him speak. Now we're going to do another month, another month, and we don't know how the new councilors feel. I'm really, really disappointed about that. You know, actually in the beginning, when we, you know, that whole meeting where Tom didn't have eighteen Sunny Side on the thing, that was a difference, because when we did speak that night, then Harry says, well, we'll have a night designated and on the end of last November first, and that's when we, we, several of us residents spoke, and that's when the blight committee was formed, and that's how we got this thing going. But, you know, we, we can't let this thing go, we're going to, we're going to lose another month or so now to, to lose the town this back. In reference to that point, when we did have the discussion, it was my intent, even before I got all the residents to come up, it was my intent that I'm here asking for something this town should have in place already. And then the committee says, well, we got to, we got to do some legwork and, come on, we're behind the times, like it's been said. We debate all the other towns that have it, now I'm going to go do the legwork and... So that's really where I'm coming from, I haven't said that before, but I'm disappointed. We're asking for something that should have been placed years ago. It's not costing anything, nothing on the budget, folks. So, going to stand back, Mike?
I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing anticipating-
Let me know, please, so I can put another ad in the Times, so we can, maybe get the residents up. If there are any more residents here who want to speak, please come up.
George Millard, Dogwood Road, on the blight, I'd just like to remind you that this isn't addressing a specific problem of someone's property. It's a general piece of an ordinance that's meant to address, meant to provide a tool for whatever enforcement arms you approve of. I, I just sat back here and heard people saying, well, this all falls on the zoning enforcement officer. I remind you, the zoning enforcement officer is a part-time person, and now you're talking about, or his designee. Who does he have as a subordinate to, to give, to be a designee? But that's enough on blight. I just have one, one comment I'd like to share with you on the police facility. And that is that in this community, we suffer from a lack of meeting space. The two libraries, which each have two rooms, are heavily booked and unavailable, and the rooms are not, not too large. The rooms that are available at the senior center are small as well. Communities that build police departments typically have a community room attached to it that is available for, for groups to use. I'm suggesting that when you're thinking about what you're going to do with this police department and that ever moves forward, that you think about having a community room attached to that police department that's as large as you can afford to go. A, a room of thirty-five, forty people is less useful than a larger room. The police department will use it for training purposes, for their own purposes. I, I would guess that the fire service would find use for it too. And I would point out to you that one of the things that you've been talking about for a long time is a town center and that this would be a very first step toward establishing a town center identity, a place where people would go for various organizations, and in fact, the town council could use it as their meeting space on, on a regular basis, repurpose this area for use for the town hall if the town hall's too small, and possibly with a little forward thinking, you might, you might find that that's a useful thing in the, in the future. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Anybody else?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
I move it.
Second.